And I want to welcome everybody to our first 2022 EW Town Hall meeting now you know and in in great energy, great fashion. We love to do these silent snaps. So like you can make absolutely as much noise as you want, or you can make as little noise as you want. But just just make it look like you're making a lot of noise via Zoom. So let's give it a run through, right? And I gotta, I gotta mute because I'm gonna make a lot of noise. Let's give it a run through. So on the count of three, everybody just go crazy with the snap. So welcome to the Emergent Works Town Hall 2022. Make some noise. Yusuf, you won. You absolutely got it. You absolutely won. Um, really appreciate all y'all coming out tonight. Tonight is a uh, really dope, really special. And what we want to do is we want to get in the, the habit of meeting with everyone. So we got mentees, we got community members, we have mentors, we have the EW staff, we have EW board members, we got EW OGs on here. Um, some of the members that I started with in 2019. So like it always feel good to just come together um, as a family and build. So first and foremost, I just wanted to welcome you. And tonight we'll be going through, you know, mission, vision, goals, and you'll be hearing uh, some amazing updates coming from our uh, leadership team. So um, I'm really excited about everything that we're doing here. But without further ado, I would like to pass it off to my good brother Yusuf to uh, share a couple of words about uh, how his experience has been becoming our first full-time associate engineer at Emergent Works. Come on y'all, make some noise for Yusuf. He is the GOAT.
Wow, wow, wow. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. Uh, it's been a tremendous journey. You know, just waking up every day saying to myself in the mirror that I'm a software engineer, you know, and you know, not that I ever doubted myself, but just have, after having a decade of doors slammed in my faces, face and, you know, just dead ends. You know, it's just amazing just seeing that something that I set out to do two years ago come to fruition. You know, and just having many successes along the way with it culminating with me landing here at Emergent Works. And just from day one, you know, Emergent Works has been that ideal and work environment that I've always wanted to have, like all the things that you want to have in a work environment. EW checks the boxes off for that, you know, culture, uh, you know, something that's culturally uh, involved, socially conscious, uh, just dedicated to the work. You know, just uh, community outreach, everything that you can name. And so it's just been that from day one. It's been a tremendous work experience. I've been blessed with the dynamic uh, edge team. You know, I see most of them on tonight, Ariel, Mark. Uh, I saw some other faces. I see Aiden here, just everyone at EW. Uh, Will, hey, Will's here, you know, and I'm not sure if L is here, but if you know, L's here with us in spirit. So I'll speak on L just having that dynamic engineering team where you know, they make me feel as though I belong there. You know, it's never you know, well, you don't know, so take a step back and you know, no, they say, well, look, you know, here's a parachute. And you know, here's a little flotation device, but go out there, jump out the plane, jump out in the middle of the ocean. Explore, learn, we're here to help you if you need any help. And so, you know, you can't uh, put a price on that. You can't put a price tag on it. It's just so invaluable that to have people around you that are dedicated to, to you learning, want to see you succeed. You know, that no blockers in the way. They're constantly checking in on me, making sure that I have, you know, the correct mental health. Making sure that I'm reaching targets, you know, just always meeting with me and say, hey, is there anything else you need from me? If it's something you need, reach out to me, you know, so this, you know, it's, it's just uh, I'm speechless and everybody knows I'm full of words. You know, so, so for me to just sit there and just be speechless, it's just a tremendous blessing and uh, for those who are new to Emergent Works, you're gonna love Emergent Works from day one. For those that are here, you know, we just glad everybody's here, everybody. No matter whether they're on the engineering team, whether they're uh, in administration, whatever the different departments are, you know. We have a great community outreach coordinator in Paola. We have a great production assistant or a, a program assistant in, in uh, Rico and Army and Eli, the tremendous work that you do outboard, like everybody that, you know, that just all across the, all across every department. You know, even from those who are not actually employees, but it's just part of the mentor and mentee program. It's just tremendous. Went to an excellent workshop. We always have great workshops, like I could just go on and on and on and on. And I just said, I'm speechless, right? So y'all can tell I'm catching my flavor right now. So you know, uh, it's, it's just really tremendous and you know, all this excitement and fun energy that you see coming out of me, that's what Emergent Works does to you because that's the type of environment they have. I see my dog, uh, Giovanni here, you know, JTC Spring 2020. Makita is here, you know, I see uh, JTC alum on the call, everything, man. We we have a lot of stuff going on across the board and I just love this environment. Welcome everyone. Uh, and I'll pass it back to you, Army.
Awesome, awesome. Uh, Yusuf, again, just wanted to say congratulations. Just wanted to give you your flowers. You're really killing it. You are like the energy and the light of our, of our org on a day to day. Love joining the standups and what you represent as a black man, you know, you made history. You are black history. You are black history. So we wanted to congratulate you on that. You are the epitome of what it looks like to put in the work and to, you know, achieve your goals and to you know, be in a healthy environment. So thank you for being that and like being an example for what's to come. You know, and like, I'm gonna stop there because one thing I want to introduce to you guys formally is our leadership team, which is uh, myself. That is Ada McDonald, that is Mark, and that is Eli. And um, you know, everybody plays a different role and has a different responsibility, but you know, we've been working in unison trying to uh, just take everything up another level. So what I want to do right now uh, to give everybody some, some more technical updates, I want to pass it to Aiden and then we'll, he can pass it to Mark. Uh, and then we'll, we'll keep going from there.
Awesome. Thank you, Army, and uh, shout out to you, Yusuf. You know, I mean, one of your biggest fans. Uh, um, so yeah, super, super glad to be here tonight. Um, really excited to be able to work with this amazing group of people and also connect with the community tonight. Um, really wanted to provide everybody sign some updates with what uh, we've been working on, on the engineering end and also what we're looking at um, for some of our goals for 2022 and beyond. Um, for those of you that, that don't know, um, Emergent Works was very fortunate to um, secure a grant from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative um, late last year to work um, over 2022, 2023. And um, hopefully beyond that, uh, on the Bail Fund App, which is a app that um, allows for the more uh, efficient um, deployment of bail funds to a national network of uh, bail funds that are organized through an uh, organization called Community Justice Exchange. Um, so we're currently in the process of building up our engineering team to work on that product, um, but also have been spending a lot of time thinking about how do we build this uh, or bring this very vibrant, amazing community that we have? Um, as evidenced in our Slack channels and all of these um, amazing interactions happening during the mentorship program um, into an online venue that we can actually have these opportunities for learning. Um, and also have a production level application that mentees are able to contribute to um, the code base to even earlier than um, we've really seen before, right? So even before you get into the, the time of jobs, where mentors would be able to do that with mentees. Um, so during this year, our first two quarters, we're really focusing on building up our uh, team of senior engineers to support and um, starting to build this product, also uh, taking over full management of the Bail Fund App. Um, and then leading into the third and fourth quarter, so we'll really be able to start focusing on um, offering internships to work on um, the products that we're building. Um, and we'll be building our leadership and engineering and advancing pathways. Um, apprenticeship program or, or associate engineers program um, that will launch fully, right? Yusuf is our, our first associate engineer, full-time hire. Uh, will launch fully at the end of this year. Um, really excited about all of this, a lot of work that we're having to put in. Um, a lot of hiring that we're having to do. Um, so as we came to the mentor uh, meeting a week and a half ago, anybody knows anybody that's interested and uh, and uh, senior backend engineer position or any of the other ones that we're posting, please share with your network, uh, because that is definitely, the faster we can get our team of senior engineers to really build this foundation. Right? Because we want to be able to hire uh, associate engineers on um, and have these internships. We really want to make sure that it's a really meaningful experience for everybody. Um, and that we're able to provide the um, experience working on production level code to get everybody into jobs long-term. Um, so really excited about this journey, happy to answer questions. I know Mark will probably have uh, more to say about the developments on our Bail Fund App and our incredible team that we all feel so lucky to, to work with. Um, but yeah, just again, so happy to to be here and thanks for everybody for making time on your Monday night.
Thanks, Aiden. I couldn't, couldn't have said it better. Um, just also want to shout out Yusuf. Yusuf, you're the core of our team. You do so, so much. It's so great to work with you and you know, can't, can't wait to, to see, uh, you know, what, what we're able to work on together the next, over the next year. Uh, so you know, I think, I think Aiden covered a, a, a lot of, of what we've been doing. I also want to shout out Will, who's, who's here somewhere, who's really hard on um, onboarding uh, the, the first new bail fund. Since we've taken um, ownership to Bail Fund App, which is awesome. So we have a meeting tomorrow morning to, to really uh, launch that. So it's a really exciting milestone for us. A big shout out to, to L and, and Yusuf there who, who helped us get there too. Uh, and I also want to shout out Ariel, who just joined as, as uh, front engineer and tech lead. Um, just last week, so super, super excited to have Ariel on the team. Um, already contributing so much. We've got process improvements, documentation improvements. Um, we're, we're really, really lucky to, to work with the people that we get to work with and have this really uh, incredible community to, to draw from. So um, yeah, over this next year, we're really going to be focusing on the Bail Fund App, making sure that the, the quality is there and that we're able to scale up and roll this out to the remaining uh, bail funds uh, across, across the country. Um, and then we'll be looking at some of the immigration bond funds uh, as well.
Uh, what I want to do right now, we want to talk about uh, some community uh, work that we've been doing and we've been focuses on, focusing on. So I'd love to pick the energy back up, pick the, pick the spirit back up and pass it over to Paola, who's been doing a phenomenal job as our community outreach coordinator. Come on, make some noise for Paola, guys.
Everyone, um, again, sorry about what just happened. Um, as you guys know, like Emergent Works, it, it exudes black excellence and we definitely want to honor that. It's Black History Month. So we put in place a couple of different, um, oh, sorry to hear background noise. It's just a rough night for everyone, but um, we definitely want to honor that. We want to make connections with like, uh, you know, successful black professionals in the tech space. So we're planning on like linking and um, making some posts. So look out for that on our social media. Also, in terms of like honoring Black History Month, we are planning a poetry night event. So that should be expected on the 24th of this um, month. Uh, we're still finalizing like flyers and organizing it all, but um, we'd really love to see you all there. Um, in terms of, uh, yeah, you're right, Perry. Um, in terms of like Women's History Month, I'm still in the process of like brainstorming. So I'd love to, you know, connect with fellow female identifying mentees. If you'd like to reach out, if there's something on your mind that you'd like to see Emergent Works, you know, um, work on, for work, uh, Women's History Month, please reach out. And in terms of like letters of support, um, as you know, we work with like system impacted people and it might be hard to ask for support. But who, whoever's on this call that needs support, whether it's for your PO or a judge or anyone for that matter, like please reach out. I'll more than happy to write a letter of support for you. And um, yeah, I'll, I'll keep it short. I'm sorry, the, my mind is everywhere after all that, but um, I'll kick it to Eli.
What's going on, everybody? Alright, so you know, just to keep the flow of the show going, um, some of the amazing things that are happening here at Emergent Works. I, I can't, you know, we big up the team all the time. And shout out to you all, but it's really the mentees, the mentors, you know, the the real roots. Um, there, you guys are the roots are, you guys are the roots of what this organization is. And um, I'm really just excited on, you know, the operational side and program side to be able to contribute to adding more resources to the pot. I wouldn't be here literally if I wasn't a mentee, boy, almost two years ago. Like that's, that's a major thing for me. So this is um, first time I'm on this side of the town hall. So I just really want to say thank you guys for you know, rocking with us and um, you know, really making all of our jobs like worthwhile. I, I really have a grown in appreciation for y'all, especially after tonight. So um, you know, when it comes to programs, just to stick to the mentee stuff, I really want to just give a shout out to all of the, the mentees who have been putting some numbers on the board, whether it's learning how to code HTML, CSS, or JavaScript. And we have some mentees that are in here. One of them is actually going to speak um, in a little bit, but um, another one actually got um, into a Latonia, shout out to you. Um, you got into, I think the underdog, uh, uh, underdog devs, I believe.
Yes, is there a project underdog?
Project underdog, yes, yes. We're so excited for that for you because you deserve it. You've been putting in that work. Um, we have um, mentees like Patrice who are now doing, um, who are now, who is now on the path to teaching at Rikers Island, teaching the youth of the city. The ones that we have to really take the most care of and like pay a lot of a focus to, to teaching them digital literacy. So when it's time for them to re-enter society, they're at, they're at a point in the line where they can actually get jobs tomorrow that can take them out of that cycle of, of recidivism. You know, like a lot of these plans, they seem really grand until you just realize you're going step by step. And you know, just from um, you know, us playing together as a community, we're able to share those wins, we're able to um, afford people the opportunity to, you know, continue their education, whether it's here at EW um, or at bootcamps or in um, collegiate, collegiate settings. We really just stoked to, you know, be a part of your, your journey. Um, just to move on really quickly to the trap program. I am always going to have a little extra sauce in my presentation when we talk about trap. Because you know why? When I was 13, 14 years old, going to, you know, these talent shows in Brooklyn and all these places that like I had no business in, I knew I had to be there because it was a plan like in my mind, like I knew superstar was the idea. How do you get there? How do you get there? How do you make that real? How do I know the skills to like, get me to that next level without having to pay thousands of dollars? Just for somebody to give me their notes off of Wikipedia. We started a program where we are finally merging music and technology. And we, and we officially launched on January 4th. Make some noise for the trap mentees. I don't know if there's any in here right now, but make some noise for them in spirit because they are just like you guys, technologists. There are people that are now finding ways to enter the tech field by way of their passion. And, and so in the trap program, for those who don't know, we focus on audio engineering, therapeutic songwriting, web development, um, and uh, songwriting skill building and digital entrepreneurship that we like to call the e-hustle. So once we get to a point where well, really the end of the 16 weeks where the mentees now know how to run a session, meaning their workspace on their own, knowing how to now um, make a livelihood off of their streams, knowing what a stream is, but also being able to create a one-page web, uh, one-page website that can host all of their brand assets. And we as Emergent, as Emergent Works are going to host one year um, of their site hosting. So they have a full runway to just use all the knowledge they're getting and applying it in real time. And um, it's exciting stuff. It's really exciting stuff. And we're on our way to uh, rolling out our OBI's, which are the objective based incentives. Like I said, livelihoods. It's COVID. All the places in the city that you know, we usually would go to perform aren't open. But you're still who you are. You're still a craftsman. You're still someone trying to get better. So we've, we're providing opportunities where they can, one, join um, uh, community-wide events to, and perform where they can obtain a, um, an incentive, a financial incentive for doing so. Because it just lets them know that you building your value as you're learning strengthens you once you get into the boardroom or once you get to that job interview. Where you now know, hey, I was able to learn all of these new skills and still uh, um, be rewarded for it based on my completion. We really believe that in order for folks to end these cycles of poverty, to end these cycles of recidivism, end these cycles of just a gap in true happiness in this country, we have to make sure people understand their value. And the value that they put into their work is the loudest symbol that they can have. So we're going to continue to do that and build that out. So um, we will be sure to give you guys all of the updates on that. And if you know anybody who's interested in joining for the next round of trap or for the next round of the one-on-one mentorship, we will be sharing all of the links um, in the general Slack channel after this uh, meeting. So stay tuned there. Um, we are a little bit pressed for time, so I just uh, want to say to all the mentees in here, we are working on an amazing way for you guys to now have a, a soundproof exit plan out of this cohort. So if you would like to continue learning with Emergent Works, we have a plan for you there and we have some amazing ways to not only get um, your feedback, but to also put you in position to better achieve the goals that you set forth at the top of the cohort. We are 12 weeks in, guys. We are 12 weeks in. We are almost there. These last four weeks are going to be electric and I'm really excited because you guys are going to make it that way. And you have a thousand percent support from myself, from Army, from the rest of the EW team. So without any further ado, um, I would like to throw it back to Army. Yeah. Would you like to say to the people, man?
Awesome. Let's, uh, I'll wrap up. We'll pass it. I want to introduce um, one of our OG mentees. And I say OG because like there's a certain respect that comes with it. There's a certain respect for the process. There's a certain respect for the the work that you put in and knowing this amazing woman's story, I've just personally been encouraged because like I tell people all the time, I want to see people that look like my mother in this industry. And like, I, I have the honor of seeing that through Ariel, through uh, this next person that I'm calling um, Makita. And I want to give Makita her flowers because uh, she is a full-time engineer. Um, started as a mentee back in 2020. So now being able to just see you in the light that you're in, like, we just want to hear about your process. Give us an update about the work that you've been doing. And like, just as a community, just congratulate you um, and say, welcome to the tech industry, Makita. Come on, let's make some noise for Makita. This is black excellence.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Makita.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. And um, you know, unfortunately we pressed for time because I feel like I have so much to say because this journey has been like, at this point surreal, right? Like, um, I remember like starting the journey and really I was like, I just came home. I was working all these jobs. I felt like I was barely surviving. And I came across this email that said, want to earn more money pretty much, like learn to code. And I didn't know anything about coding at the time, but I knew that I wanted to make more money, right? And I explored the opportunity because I always wanted to learn. Like I always had an interest in learning anything pretty much. But I discovered that I really, really, really loved it. You know, like it was something that I really like, I was like, I'm here, like this is where I want to be, right? But even though I found myself thinking that and feeling that, my actions didn't really show that, right? Because I just came home. I have a daughter. She had a baby. You know, I was working all these jobs and trying to figure out where I'm going to live, how I'm going to pay my bills. So you know, it was from the outside looking in, you might not have known that I wanted it as much as I wanted it, right? But I continued to press, you know, and that's what I want to encourage you all to do, like no matter what, because although it's always good to have others believing you, like the first point of success is believing in yourself, right? So you know, always be encouraged in that regard. But um, through my journey, it's like going to school, right? Like you might take a class that's really, really interesting, but you doing stuff, right? You, you outside, you outside, outside. You with your friends or you know, you, you, you're not giving it all your attention, even though you like it, right? So now what do you need? What do you need to recover from messing up in a class that you really like, but you're not doing that great in, right? You need support. You need that tutor, right? Like you need somebody to get you on track. So this is where Emergent Works comes into play, right? And realistically speaking, like the class is great. The professor's great, the people that initiated the class is great, but you're not going to have the same relationship with the teacher or the institution that the class is a part of as you have with your mentor, right? Or your tutor. So that support is a different kind of support. That support is the support where you build like a relationship, a friendship, like you become, you can become a family member with your tutor because your tutor is somebody that you have a more intimate one-on-one relationship with. So I feel especially connected to Emergent Works because I feel like Emergent Works has established themselves as a family. And I, I consider them, like, I don't know if any of you know of like FUBU, right? Like for us, by us, right? So Emergent Works is exactly that. It's the for us, by us for this industry. And you know, every day that I see Eli and Army, like I'm so encouraged, like just by seeing like you know, African-American men doing this work, dedicating themselves, like you know, beating all of like the stigmas that come with like prior incarceration or just, you know, being a minority. And you know, even now, like I, I started with Justice Through Code, which you know, I would not be here today if it wasn't for Aiden. And now he's a part of the team and I feel like the team is sealed now. Like it's, it's just like some awesome people here. And I feel like this jerk, this, this body right here is gonna go places. So I'm so, 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 so excited. And even like with what just happened a few minutes ago, like you know, it reminded me of something that I learned along the way that has been like, um, really like a guiding light for me in my journey as a software engineer. And what Hack Reactor always said, um, the bootcamp that I went to, they always told us that their goal is to make us comfortable, right? Think about this, hear me out. Their goal is to make us comfortable being uncomfortable. So that's it, right? You gotta, sometimes you have to become comfortable with being uncomfortable. And that is exactly how you're able to respond to things as quickly as Eli did. You know, he took the steps immediately. We didn't have to wait 20 minutes, 40 minutes, like we got, we got uncomfortable and we knew that we could fix the problem. And I want you to know that, like no matter how this journey might fail, no matter how like hard or difficult that um, it might be at times, you know, just keep taking those steps. Keep reflecting on what I'm saying to you today. Like I'm feeling uncomfortable. I'm feeling like this is hard, but this is what I'm supposed to feel. And I gotta develop a trust that no matter what, I'm going to get through it. So you know, that's what I want to encourage you guys um, to, to kind of reflect on and to move in. And it's been like, it's been unbelievable to me, like you know, and I also thought about like, just looking at everyone here today. I thought about like when I first got to Bedford Hills and it was like, damn, I'm here. And looking forward, like looking at towards the end of it felt like you couldn't see it, right? But looking back doesn't look as long as looking forward. You know what I mean? And that's exactly how this journey is probably for a lot of you, like you know, you might see me like, wow, she's a software engineer now, but and, and you're just starting. So it feels like even if it's like, oh, it's a year from now that you might be in the same shoes as I am. It still feels like a long time, but believe. Me, when you get here, you not gonna feel that anymore. You're going to be like, and it's also going to give you that belief, like whatever you put yourself through. And you know, whatever you. Believe in, in yourself, you can make it. And, and even if it looks hard, even if it looks long, you're gonna get there. And when you look back, that time is going to seem like nothing. So I just really want to encourage everybody here today. I know that we apologize for like, you know, the mishap today, but we don't need to apologize. We need to just. Learn from what we experienced, take action, improve and keep it pushing. And that's what I want you all to do. Like I'm so excited for each and every one of you guys. Like I always. Like I'm like on a tech mission. Like I want to see everybody doing good. I want everybody like to. Reach where I'm at today and like, I'm still looking to climb, right? I'm, I'm still interested in learning more. Like I'm a part of Trap. I think that's an amazing. Program and you know, I want to see its success and I'm just super duper, duper excited. Like. Paola reached out to me like and at the last minute and it's like, you guys have called me one minute before showtime. I'm here for you because. I believe in each and every one of you and I'm just, I, I can't even really express how excited I am. To be a part of this. Like I'm grateful and I'm happy to be able to talk about that. And you know, I, I, I don't even know how to express my gratitude, but. You know, everybody here, you got it. I got your back. We got your back and just, just keep pushing and believing and. I can't wait to hear your story.
Come on, y'all. Let's make some more noises for Makita. You are phenomenal. Really do appreciate you. Story, your drive, your passion, everything, Makita. Stick around, you know, next cohort, we, we, you know, we, we shaking some things up. We really excited about that. Ashley, Aiden, Eli, Mark has been doing an amazing job, just like really putting. The mentor, one-on-one mentorship program into systems thinking and like. What are the outcomes and like supporting each phase of that? So we're really, really excited about that. Also shout out to Ashley Singh, our recruiter. You know, with big business now, we need, we got to get the team on board. You know, she's doing an amazing job, making sure that we get the right candidates. We got, we spent a lot of time building. You know, I'm really big on, on people, you know, like I, I, I probably get annoying with this, but like I'm always going to be the gut check for the community. Because like, if it's not about the mentees, if it's not about the mentors, then we are totally out of compliance. That's not legal compliance. That's not financial compliance, but in terms of mission, goals and visions, we'll be out of compliance. We only have four minutes left and like, I just want to say like, tonight is freaking amazing because this is the first of many. Moments that we'll be getting together. Two, two dates that I want to flag for you, February 24th, 6 to 7:30 PM. Make sure that you, we'll be sending a, a private Zoom link. We'll be sending a private Zoom link to join. Our Black History Poetry Night. So we'll be. We, we want all of you guys to come out. If you've got some haikus, if you've got some bars, if you've got some vocals, if you've got an instrument, we want you to come out. We want you to perform, we want you to share. And like, we're going to send a menu of like what you need to have on your end to like, really get in the vibe, like make sure you got your candle lit. Your favorite beverage. If you're of age, your favorite beverage, like we really going to have a good time in that capacity. The second, so that's February 24th, 6 to 7:30 PM. The second date that I want to throw in your, your spirit is March 18th. That is the showcase for the one-on-one mentorship program, March 18th. It will be virtual. We're gonna, we're gonna celebrate all of our mentees. We're gonna look at, we're gonna see all of their passion projects. We're gonna get some speakers in. And we're just gonna celebrate the community until we can do it back in person. You know, we, we, we're going to get to that level again. We're going to get to that safe space again, but, and I'm always at the office Tuesdays and Thursdays. From 9 AM to 4 PM every week, Tuesday, Thursday, 9 AM, 4 PM. If you just want to come by and do your work like around us and like we just all eat lunch together. More than happy to do that. We usually order lunch at 2 o'clock. If you want to come in just for lunch, happy to do that. I'll eat a lot of empanada mama. The guac is amazing. Like I'd never ate guacamole before. I eat empanada mama. It's actually crazy. But you know, I was going to share some of the goals and stuff that we had, you know, but. You know, it's all good because like we'll be able to see that in real time and like at our next meeting, we'll be able to share that. Two more points that I have, then we out of here. We'll be, we'll be speaking at a lot of conferences this year. I know we'll be going to, in March, we're going to Oregon. We're going to Boston in April and in June, we're going to Miami. We took five mentees, eight, eight, five to eight mentees to Atlanta for Black Future Weekend. And that's Van Jones and Prince, the late Prince, that's their organization. And like, we just went to attend. We WEW shirts. We just came deep, looking real good, but this year we're speaking. So like, that's freaking major because Van Jones is a, like super millionaire. You can't even get next to him. I was trying to get a picture. His security swept him out the room. Like yo. It was crazy, but um, we're on the panel this year and I'm really excited about that because. Again, just getting a message out and getting the word across. So as we do these conferences, we'll be sharing the details. All of you, anybody from our community is always welcome to come, come hang out, come chill, like who I am on Zoom is who I am off of Zoom. Some of you know that. Like I'm really just chilled. I just enjoy like calmness. But the last thing I want to share is that Emergent Works. What I love about our community, what I love about our org is that we challenge the norm, is that we push the line, is that we're nothing like everyone else. If you don't know, Cry Jones is the gentleman that creates our merchandise, but he's also my older cousin. And when we were 11 and 12 years old, my father took us to Rikers Island to punish us. To like, that's how my father used to punish us when we were younger. He would lock us up. But I'm happy to announce today that we just got another grant that granted us access into every juvenile in New York State. Including Rikers Island. So Emergent Works is officially inside the New York State prison system with, we skipped the line. Everybody told me I couldn't do it. Everybody said it was impossible because we got to connect with this person, that person. No, we EW, we do it our way. We create the rules. So we taking trap in there. We taking digital literacy in there. We going to do what we want because it is us who. Are on the frontline and serving the community and introducing technology to them. So that is a major win for all of us. And like, that's so beautiful because we get to meet young people where they are. So we'll be, we'll be, we'll be supporting with pre-release and post-release. You know, so going inside, building relationships, doing workshops, but when they come home, Emergent Works will be at the gate with a welcome home bag for them. That's how in-depth it is. So we're getting into case management and we really want to see lives change. And this is a big win for us. Because like, you know, all, a lot of us lived this trauma. So to be able to go back inside these same systems that once told us we'll never even be here. It's like the change that we really want to see. So among everything this evening, like I'm really encouraged. I'm really excited. I, I appreciate your patience. You know, we're going to tighten up on our Zoom authentication. It's so good. I really do appreciate each and every one of you. Shout out to the team. Shout out to Makita. Shout out to Yusuf. Shout out to the mentors. We're going to see you Wednesday. We got some amazing. Activities planned. Shout out to the mentees. Sending your cash apps is stipend time. It's stipend time. So you know, we're excited about that. We always are going to smile when we're able to put money in people's pockets. But family, you know, I love you guys. I'm grateful for your service. I'm grateful for you guys serving each other and let's continue to make Emergent Works a community that, that we can all be a proud of, all be proud of and all, you know. Advocate for and become, you know, change agents within. So I love you guys. Please write the Slack channel. If you have any questions or feedback, we ran out of a bit, a bit of time, but we definitely want to hear from you. Everything that you wrote in the beginning was absolutely phenomenal. So without any further ado, everyone have an amazing, amazing rest of your night.